The first item that we have here will be presentations. Young voter engagement day.
Can we come back to that?
We can come back.
You don't have your homework? I told you I'm going to be here at 7:30.
It's almost eight.
Something we really wanted to do.
To be continued. We're flexible. And youth is normally wasted on the young. We will now move on to the consent agenda items since we have nothing else at this point in time. And this consent agenda item is very detailed. And I will just only deal with the highlights. There's a lot of good information that we just don't have time for me to go through that deals with the contracts and also the detailed information that's involved. So feel free to go to the clerk's site and look under the city council agenda items. The first item we will deal with is the proposed contract for street light building audit. Background, Echo Works is a not-for-profit located in Detroit. Echo Works with the government and other not-for-profits to help them achieve energy savings and sustainability. Southfield has taken advantage of their free energy saving training in the past, and the city is currently in discussion with Echo Works regarding other energy-saving initiatives and grants. One of the services of Echo Works provides a utility billing optimization, utility bill optimization, that's UBO, in which Echo Works analyzes existing bills and seeks to optimize rates, rebates, and refunds. Utility bill optimization has the potential to generate significant cost savings with no upfront costs or project investment required. The focus of the proposed UBO will be the Southfield DTE and City-Owned Lights, that's DTE, utility bills. The cost of the service will be sharing of the savings from the building areas identified by Echo Works. In essence, whatever savings are identified, we will share those savings with Echo Works. Southfield, those sharing, that sharing arrangement is as follows. Southfield will receive 35% of the savings. Echo Works will receive 35% of the savings. And Southfield, the remaining 30% of the savings is to be dedicated to an energy revolving loan fund for future investments. The fiscal impact of this particular project, there is no cost to the city for this service other than the share of savings. It is recommended by the city administrator that the council approve the contract with Echo Works for utility bill optimization of the city-owned and DTE street lights as a professional service contract as defined in ordinance number 470. The next item on the consent agenda item is the proposed sale of real property. And as I indicated, there's a lot of detailed information on the council printout that I would not be covering. So if you are interested in more detail, please go to the city clerk's site and look under the city council agenda. Proposed sale of this real property, parcel number 762434276002. Ryan Myers-Johnson lives at and owns 20286 Woodhaven. The city owns parcels directly to the east of 20287 Woodburn. Mr. Myers-Johnson desires to purchase that parcel at 202... that parcel which is 762434276002 so that he can combine the two parcels and construct a garage or outbuilding east of his house. The city assessor has determined the true cash value of the parcel is to be $15,000, and Mr. Myers-Johnson has agreed to this price. In addition to the proceeds from the sale, selling of that parcel to Mr. Myers-Johnson will relieve the city of the possible premise liability and maintenance costs for the property. Selling the parcel would also return the parcel to the tax roll. It is recommended by the city administrator that council authorize this sale. The next item will be the proposed sale of real property, parcel 762436326011. On January 29, 2018, council authorized offering non-billable parcels for the sale to adjacent property owners. That parcel number I just read is one of those parcels. The city assessor has determined that the true cost, that the true cash value of parcel number 762436326-001 to be between $10,000 and $12,000. A Ms. Hillary Springer has agreed to purchase the parcel for $10,000. In addition to the proceeds from the sale, selling parcel number as referenced before to Ms. Springer will relieve the city of possible premise liability and maintenance costs for the property. Selling the parcel also returns the parcel to the tax roll. The city administrator recommends that council approve the sale of this parcel to Ms. Springer. The next consent agenda item, D, proposed listing of real property. The city of Southfield owns several billable residential parcels that are surplus to the city needs. Today's agenda item proposes listing 12 of these parcels for sale. The parcel will be addressed individually. Now what I'm going to do with this is just give you the street name and not necessarily get into each parcel individually because we will be here quite a bit of time. The parcels are, and here again, if you want additional information, please go to the city clerk's website and look up the council agenda, which will be, this item will be a council agenda number, council agenda D. The parcels are located on Woodland Drive, Meadowwood Avenue, Addison Street, Nine Mile Road, Lee Wright Avenue, Prosper Drive, MADA Avenue, Mahon Street, M-A-H-O-N, Birch Ridge The next item on the agenda would be consent agenda item E, placement of Northland Peacock. Southfield Public Arts Commission, in concurrence with the Southfield Public Library, recommend the Peacock from Northland Art Collection be placed in a drop-off circle in front of the library. The Peacock is one of the original Northland outdoor structures that graced the Peacock courtyard at the mall. The fiscal impact, the cost of restoring and ensuring the Peacock has been paid from the privately donated money in the Northland Art Fund as well as the cost of installation. No city dollars have been expended for this project. It is recommended that the council authorize the Peacock from the Northland Art Collection be placed in the drop-off circle in front of the Southfield Public Library. Consent agenda item F, Civic Center Campus pavement improvement. And this is another item that has a lot of detail. So if you wish more detail, please consult the council agenda items on our website, city website. The 2018 Civic Center Campus pavement improvement. In 2017, it was determined that an estimated $1 million in repairs were necessary to update the parking lot, drives, and sidewalks on campus and at other city-owned locations. At this time, a plan has been devised to address the pavement repairs necessary for the Civic Center Campus. Bidding on the project was conducted, and the low bidder was determined to be Hutch Paving, that's H-U-T-C-H, paving. The following defects and proposed repairs have been identified at the City Center Campus. And these are just the major items, I won't get into the detail. But the main campus entrance road south, main campus entrance road south, will be reconstructed. The next major category, north parking lot south, will be reconstructed. The next major category, the north roadway pavement repairs, that will be repaired. Additional campus pavement improvements will be, the road to the east of the complex is falling in several areas, is failing in several areas. The rear ice rink parking lot is oversized and is in poor condition. Two parking lots north of the library lot are not equipped with ADA compliance. The city no longer desires to have the pavilion that is located north of the ice rink. Fiscal impact, bids were solicited from contractors interested in performing the work described above. The low bid was confirmed to be from the Hutch Paving Incorporated. That low bid was $1,237,217.38. Funding for this project will come from Building Authority Construction Fund account. This particular item received quite a bit of discussion, and there were some amendments that did not necessarily affect the cost that will deal with perhaps a pavilion and some other small road work. The city administrator and his staff is to get back to us on those particular items that were discussed and that are captured in the amendments of this, for that file particular study session. But the dollar amount will not be affected. Approval of the parking enforcement equipment upgrade for code enforcement parking. Background, code enforcement assumed responsibility for parking enforcement in April 2010. In December 2014, automated ticket writing devices were purchased from Civic Smarts Incorporated. The equipment was purchased in 2014, the equipment purchased in 2014 is excessively worn and is outfitted with outdated software. The purchase of upgraded equipment will increase efficiency by providing equipment that is fully functional as well as provide software that is in line with the current industry trend. In June, on June 15, 2018, code enforcement and the director of our information technology department participated in an online demonstration of upgraded equipment and current software availability by Civic Smarts Incorporated. The purchase of the upgraded equipment and associated software would not increase the department budget expenditures. Revenue will be realized through increased productivity. It is estimated, the estimated cost of these services is $34,339.00, and funding shall be provided from the code enforcement account. It is recommended by the city administrator that council adopt this project. Consent agenda item H, wage adjustment for the deputy city assessor. The deputy city assessor has been with the city of Southfield since September 2017. Previously, he served as the city assessor for St. John, Michigan. Mr. Thurston has obtained the certification of Michigan Master Assessing Officer, that's MMAO, which was commonly described as Level Four. The city of Southfield, based on its taxable value, is required by state, by the state of Michigan, to have a certified MMAO level performing in the assessing duties. This certification is extremely rare and difficult to obtain. Mr. Thurston has performed exceedingly well in their first year with the city of Southfield. Our ability, our ability to secure necessary succession planning in the assessing department by retaining Mr. Thurston prompts our immediate consideration of a wage adjustment based on market pressure. After consultation with the city administration, with, after consultation with city assessor Mr. Ratcliffe and human resources director Mrs. Suskin, the city administrator has recommended an immediate wage increase to $93,200. Mr. Thurston is aware of other opportunities which frankly offers an increased compensation package, but he prefers to focus his career path in the city of Southfield. The fiscal impact of this proposal is the wage adjustment will result in an additional total compensation of $11,851 in the fiscal year 2018-2019. Funds are available in the assessing department budget within this general fund. Respectfully, our city administrator requests council approve the recommended salary increase from $84,315 to $93,200 to deputy city assessor. The next agenda item, paper towels and tissue products bid. The city of Southfield requested bids for paper products, including tissue, rolls of hand towels, and C-F-O paper towels. Bids were opened on May 24, 2018, and the overall low bidder was Nichols Paper and Supply in Spring Lake, Michigan. Nichols has provided paper products to the city in the past and provided excellent service. The low bid came in at $40,389.56. The funds for this particular purchase is included in fiscal year 2018 facilities maintenance budget. City administrator recommended council approve this purchase of the low bid. Council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve consent agenda items A through I with a stipulation that on agenda item G, that no activity to abandon the picnic shelter north of the arena...
That's F.
...be done until more study is brought back to the council.
That's F.
Is it F?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, F. Okay. Excuse me, F. Item F.
Support.
The picnic shelter and item F.
Support.
It was moved by Mr. Frazier and supported by Ms. Taylor that we approve consent agenda items A through I with the stipulation that item F come back to council before final approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda item A through I is approved. No public hearing? Let me just get back down.
I just heard from the young man, there's been a traffic accident, and he's caught in traffic. He doesn't intend to get here, so if we could wait a little longer for that proclamation.
Okay. It can always be delayed.
Well, go on to the other part of the agenda if you wouldn't mind.
No public hearing, we have no site plan, and we have communications. First person to be recognized will be Ms. Gerald.
My fellow residents, again, I would like to let you know that I am still, after over 30 years, honored and humbled to have your trust and your confidence. On October 22, 2012, our current police chief, Eric Hawkins, was appointed to serve in the city of Southfield as our chief. He exceeded all the requirements and other credentials that made him perfect for this job. The Southfield community loves our police chief, our police officers, our fire chief, our firefighters, and our very own dispatch workers. It is purported that the mayor, the city administrator, and the council president, who I will call the Gang of Three in the rest of my speech, is trying to dupe and bamboozle us, the voters, and the taxpayers by threatening to outsource our premier dispatch service to Oakland County. Why? I'm glad you ask. The Gang of Three are abusing the deputy city administrator, who is a former police chief in another smaller community. The Gang of Three appointed deputy administrator John Mishrena as project manager for that Plant Moran study. Why is this important? I'm glad you ask. The Gang of Three is trying to undermine our highly educated and decorated police chief who was just recently chosen as a man of excellence by the Michigan Chronicle. Now why is all of this important? I'm thinking, and this is Pam thinking, that you used the deputy city administrator to say that this is an effective cost-saving measure, but you guys totally disrespected our police chief, our fire chief, and the head of dispatch by not talking with them first before you started this whole study. You got a bargain basement price for that study, $9,500. Or was it really a bargain basement price? Did you just agree on that price so that you wouldn't have to bring it before council and before the people? I'm not sure. I just know that it's a lot of fluffing going on and not a lot of facts. So residents, if you're listening to me, there is going to be an election for city council. There's going to be four council seats open. Don Fracassi, Myron Frazier, Tanya Morris, and Dan Brightwell. If any council person votes to outsource our dispatch service and send it to Oakland County and commit municipal displacement for our dispatch workers, I want you to municipally displace them by not voting for them and vote them out of office. Thank you.
Next person to be recognized, Mr. Mullin.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Tonight, I'd like to talk about attention to detail. That is, council's attention to detail. I wonder just how much time do you folks here on this council spend on checking for accuracy on your minutes before you approve of them? Do you read them thoroughly? Do you even glance at them? I doubt it, and here's why. I have in hand last week's agenda for the regular meeting of June 18, 2018. And at that meeting, you folks approved the minutes for the regular meeting on May 29. It seems that you folks here have a short, short memory. That is, all seven of you have a short memory. Let me help you refresh your memory. There was no regular meeting that day, that Tuesday day in May, May 29. Yes, you heard me right. No regular meeting on May 29. And yet, you folks approved the minutes for a regular meeting on May 29 because you were asleep at the switch on June 18. In truth, it was a special meeting on May 29. And I have the proof here in hand, the agenda for that day, that day in May, May 29. Don't you folks remember you had to schedule a special meeting in late May, a makeup meeting, because you didn't have a quorum for that May 21 regular meeting? Not only are you folks getting sloppy with your minutes, but also your attendance is poor. This is not a good omen for the city of Southfield. I'm just pointing this out as a public service because you folks here have lately been going down, down, downhill. Today, the county of Oakland points to the city of Troy as their model city. And sad to say, Southfield is slowly becoming a relic of the past, just like Northland.
Next person to be recognized is Mr. Gilliam.
Good evening, the city of Southfield, chamber of councilmen and administrators. I'd like to thank, you know, I wish everybody good, what I meant, good luck on their holiday on the 4th of July next week, and the city deserves to shut down and get away with rest. What I'd like to talk to you about, Larry Nance, at first, only a few women stood up and talked about being touched in a proper way here in the state of Michigan. I went to high school here back in the mid-'60s, I was a freshman, and it was required that every young man that entered high school, the ninth grade, must swim. And from head to toe, we swam butt naked without anything on. And near the end of the semester, the physical ed teacher said, the last one I'm not going to get it. I didn't know what that meant, but everybody jumped out the pool. And the last one jumped out the pool, we told him to come in here, bend over with his naked hands, slap him on the rear. And only a few spoke up at that time. Now here in the city of Southfield, a security guard took one of their shoppers back in the store, and the night manager, both of them told him, only way you can go, because we think you got a bathing suit on up in there. You had to pull your top up and let us examine you. You had to pull your pants down, let us examine you. Now, our city has one of the finest police trained in the state of Southfield, in the state of Michigan. A few years ago, maybe about five years ago, I was sitting in that parking lot out there, and a police, I mean a cab drove up, then a couple minutes later, two police cars blocked the man. And they said, what you got that lady in that car for? The cab driver said, she owe me $6 fare, she don't have it. So I drove to the police station. And then that police officer looked at that man and said, you let that lady in there, and that young son, fire your son out of there, red now. And he said, well, I'm gonna give my money. When you let him out and call us, we got the best response time here, and we'll be there in about three or four minutes. And if you don't let that woman out of there red now, I'm gonna charge you with kidnapping. We know, our police force know how to handle it here. They trained. They can take advice. I think that we should take a look at anybody that wants to be a security out here, should take a test by our office and pay them. Be trained out here before you could be anything. And last, I want to talk about this trash pickup. This is first-class city, and when I see two men on a truck and a driver, and they pass by, stuff talking about they ain't picked up properly... pass by, stuff talking about they ain't picked up properly, you're not gonna be working here long. I tell you that right now, and go and expect to be able to get a paycheck. I tell you that right now. We expect to clean first-class city. Thank you, Dick, my friend, please.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mayor, are you a guest here?
Yes.
I'd like to bring forth the resolution that was on the agenda earlier. I was contacted recently by Michael Goldman Brown, Jr., who's at my side. Mr. Brown is leading an organization called Engage18, which is, July 1st marks the day that the Twenty-Sixth Amendment to the Constitution was ratified, setting the national age for voting for young people at age eighteen. And we are proud to join him in alerting our residents that we want young people to vote. I have analyzed the voter rolls for many years in Southfield, looking at the people who do vote, and it skews older. In some elections, we have just a handful of people under the age of twenty that have participated, particularly in the summer primary, which is coming up, as you know, on August 7th. So, before you this evening is a proclamation that I'd like to read. Youth Voter Engagement Day in the city of Southfield, Michigan, July 1st, whereas eighteen-to-twenty-nine year olds make up an estimated thirty-one percent of the electorate, yet on average in the United States, turnout to vote is less than fifty percent of the time, lower than any other demographic. And I would suggest that it's even lower than that in Southfield. Whereas, young people across the United States and our great state of Michigan are constantly feeling more out of touch with the political process, and whereas, Michigan was the fifteenth state to ratify the Twenty-Sixth Amendment. Whereas, activities young people can partake in to increase involvement in our nation's political processes include: writing a letter to a politician, be it a governor, senator, representative, mayor, or any other elected official, and tell them about an issue that they're passionate about. Second, call a politician who represents you and talk with them. Three, join a campaign. Four, join a political organization such as League of Women Voters, Young Conservatives of America, the Tea Party, Young Progressives, Engage18. Talk with a friend about politics, join a political party. Number seven, learn who your representatives are. Eight, pledge to attend a town hall meeting. Nine, talk about an issue that you are passionate about. Ten, read a piece of political news. Eleven, register to vote. Twelve, apply to work for a government official in their office or volunteer. Work at a polling location on Election Day. Fourteen, work to get your neighbors more engaged in politics. Fifteen, run for office. Sixteen, sign or circulate a petition. Seventeen, learn about an unfamiliar political concept. Eighteen, have a conversation with someone you ideologically disagree with on a current topic. So now, therefore be it resolved that I, Kenson Seiver, Mayor, City of Southfield, do hereby proclaim July 1st, 2018, as Youth Voter Engagement Day in the city of Southfield, and I encourage young people of Southfield to engage themselves in our nation's political processes of the day. I want to present this to Michael, and if you'd like to say a few words.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor Seiver. Good evening, council members, community members. As Mayor Seiver said, my name is Michael Goldman Brown, Jr., and I am here representing a nonprofit that I helped found, Engage18. And Engage18 was actually founded because myself and one of my friends, who couldn't be here today, were interested in hosting a Democratic gubernatorial primary debate. And we attempted to find sponsors, we attempted to reach out to the state Democratic Party, we attempted to get a discount from our school, and all of these efforts failed. So we had to go on a sort of tour on our own, raising donations to fund our debate, which ended up costing about $2,000, and that was all self-funded. And we actually ended up raising more than $2,000 when we went on that tour, raising money for the debate. And so we thought that it would be a bright idea to help other young people get engaged in the political process with the funds that we still had remaining. And so, that's why we founded Engage18, to sort of amplify the voice of young people and to increase our awareness of how government works and our nation's political processes while simultaneously increasing our involvement. Because, as Mayor Seiver was saying, young people vote and engage themselves in politics at such a low rate that it's quite frankly abysmal, especially given the fact that we have so many ideas, we want so many things to happen, yet we're not making our voices heard within our government. When you look at, actually at one of our meet and greets that we hosted with Engage18 with the candidate in the ninth district, we struggled to earn, he was telling us that his pollster told him that on August 7th, the primary date, they estimate that less than six percent of the electorate will be below the age of thirty, which is quite frankly abysmal, especially given the fact that primaries are so important in determining who is going to represent us in our country. And so, we've been working on several initiatives with Engage18. We've been hosting candidate meet and greets, or hosting a series of debates, starting with the Democratic debate, next is going to be a Republican debate, and then hopefully a debate with the two winning primary candidates. And we've generally been working to get young people engaged and involved in our political processes. And thank you so much to the city of Southfield for recognizing the importance of young people in our nation's political processes and recognizing July 1st as Youth Voter Engagement Day.
Thank you. Yeah, having to come up with this.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on.
Excuse me, do you know Sam Pernick?
I do not believe so.
He may be someone, because he's also working with young people, getting them encouraged to vote and all. So, you probably have his contact information, don't you, Mayor? So, that may be another way that you can kind of spread out the contacts that you have.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that tidbit. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Where'd you go to school?
Bloomfield High School, just graduated. Thank you so much.
Good.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ficassi.
Yeah. I would just like to make a comment before this young man leaves. You know, some of the things that we used to have years ago was, I think, really got young people involved, and during Michigan Week, you know, they used to have in the public schools, education on history and on government, and they would run for an office, a local office, and through the day, they would go with the councilman, and treasurer, and mayor, and learn what we're doing. And in the evening, they would take our seats and sit with us and go through the agenda. They also used to have, the public schools used to have their history classes and government classes come to the regular meetings that we have and hear us as we discuss issues. And that's really important to get the young people really involved, is to get them involved. And that's one of the two things that I know, that a lot of people showing up, and parents getting involved with their children, bringing them here, and things like that. And those are one of the things I suggest maybe you're looking at, to improve young people getting involved in government.
Absolutely. I want to bring up three of our initiatives to respond to that. We actually really appreciate the idea of young people becoming actually involved in the political process through sort of elected positions. One of the things that we're working on is instituting a system in our own school district first, and then hopefully spreading, where there will be an advisory panel of students, which is elected by the student body, which acts as a consult to the school board, because that's the sort of body of government that most affects most students, while there isn't really a voice that most students have in what their school board does. Also, we are working on organizing trips to Lansing and Washington, D.C., so that students can meet with their legislators and actually propose ideas that they may have if they are interested. And the final thing was actually, sort of prior to now, we were actually helping to get more students engaged in the school board of education's new social studies guidelines that they just released. We released a guide for students to provide public comment either online or through attending a meeting. And actually, the school board, the state school board reached out to us, and one of the members who was at the meeting, he reached out to us and asked if we could sort of find a way to procure a bunch of student testimony or input on the new guidelines, because they haven't really had that. And so, yeah, having students involved in these decisions and governance is extremely important.
Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. The clerk?
Just real quick, this perfect timing, in the spirit of collective impact and trying to galvanize that millennial vote, the clerk's office will actually be rolling out an app called Project Vote on July 1st, and it will actually be spearheading those voters, younger voters that are generally poor during the primary. So, in creating this app that I've worked on for the last seven months, it really looks at the tendencies of voters under thirty-five. So you'll have the ability in the Android and the iApple Store to download the app, and it actually reminds you to vote on voter day. So, look for Project Vote, July 1st.
Yeah. I applaud that effort, and I'm sure we will certainly, we will mention that to our members, absolutely. Thank you for having me again.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda would be council items. We do have an expense report.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move the approval of travel expense for Councilman Brightwell for the MPLP on June 15th through 16th.
Right. Moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the expense report for Daniel Brightwell, June 15th through 16th, 2018. All in favor? Aye. Approve. Expense item is approved. Any other council items? Mr. Mandelbaum.
Three quick announcements. The first is that there's a construction update. We're doing a lot of construction this summer with different roads. And starting tomorrow, if you're traveling on northbound Northwestern Service Drive, you will not be allowed to make a left turn. So, please be mindful that you're gonna have to go all the way down to Evergreen, make a Michigan left, and turn that way. And also, in our Section 15 on Winchester that we're doing construction on between Evergreen and Loser, it's going to be a one-way only during some of the construction, and it will be eastbound, going Loser to Evergreen will be the one direction that you can travel. I'd also like to remind everyone, and for those, you can actually see updates on our city's website under Construction Updates on our homepage. They have maps and all the detail that you need to know to get around the city during this construction season. Also, on Wednesday, our Parks and Rec Department will be having a Family Fun and Safety Night, Wednesday, the 27th, from 5 until 9. It's a free event. There will be demonstrations from our police department, from our fire department, and different activities, as well as refreshments for purchase. And the movie Despicable Me 3 will be shown, starting somewhere around 7:30, I believe. Last, I've already received people complaining about July 4th and some of the fireworks that occur in the different neighborhoods. And I'd like to remind residents, and maybe we can put a reminder out on our website as well, what the ordinance is in the city, and that is that the day before, the day of, and the day after, you're allowed to use consumer fireworks from 8:01 a.m. until 12:00 midnight. Other than that, you're not allowed to use fireworks at any time, so please be mindful of your neighbors. And if you do decide to use fireworks on those three days, the day before, the day of, and the day after, that you promptly stop at midnight, because it does scare animals, it does wake up children, so please be mindful of that. Thank you.
Ms. Morris.
I have a question. The company that picks up the trash, we're supposed to have the representative back in thirty days. Has that been set, the date on when he's coming back?
We've not confirmed the date, but it'd probably be our study session in July, the 9th.
I just want to make sure we're clear on that. I did ask him a question about trying to identify any of his workers that lived in Southfield. I just wanted to make sure we confirm that he is prepared to give us that data. And then, just wanted to confirm through the chair, who are residents supposed to complain to if there are questions or comments or complaints about trash pickup?
DPW.
DPW. So are you collecting any call data?
I will be tabulating, starting June 1, all the calls to DPW. But we have a couple other departments that are collecting them also, the mayor's office, and also the community relations office. But DPW would be the focal point. I'm also getting data from them. But I just want to make sure that there are no duplicates, because sometimes individuals in the mayor's office or community service, community relations, will call DPW, too. So, the ideal is to call the Department of Public Works.
So I do have a complaint, since you're here, Mayor.
Through the chair, Ms. Morris. Not every call comes into the mayor's office regarding the trash pickup, but any that do, we log, so that we're monitoring the situation. And the type of incident, whether it's brush, or not picked up, or yard waste, whatever the case may be, and then those are also shared with Public Works and GFL to do the follow-up and go back. I still have concerns about, I do not see supervisors in the streets. And with our former company, you regularly saw the supervisor going up and down the streets in a pickup truck to make sure that things were not missed. I have yet to see that.
Do I need to call the mayor's office for my complaint?
You may call me at any time.
No, I just want to say, just on the record, they were coming, this was about a week or so ago, and just a lot of file language cursing throughout the whole route in my neighborhood. I don't know if somebody was upset with someone else, one of the other residents, but it was inappropriate.
I will put that on the log. Do you have the date when that happened?
I'll get it, I'll get it for you.
It was your trash day, obviously.
Yeah, it was a trash day, so it would have been a Thursday.
Last Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
Just make sure it's reported.
Thank you.
Just as an FYI, if you can, when you are, if you get a truck number and a time, that will be obviously excellent, but that is not a hundred, hundred percent requirement. All you gotta do is just call in your complaints. But if you do have a truck number and a time, they can drill down specifically with that specific driver in our conversation with GFL. But for the general public, you have three places, but preference would be the Department of Public Works garbage pickup. And I am compiling those numbers, and the reason for it will be trying to see a trend. Okay. Could I answer your question, Ms. Morris?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. I'll make a couple little announcements here. As a veteran, I will periodically pass out, give out information that relates to veterans. Wednesday, January 27th of this particular week, You know, every last Wednesday of the month, from five to nine p.m., they are located at two four two-two-two West Nine Mile Road. Additionally, July two, twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, that's on Monday, the Polish League of American Veterans Post sixteen is hosting a classic car show from five to eight p.m. at their post, which is two five two-two-two Warren in Dearborn Heights. July seventh, twenty eighteen, the Michigan Women Veterans is hosting a yard sale and dirt therapy fun program. And I will read that again, yard sale and dirt therapy fun program. It will run from noon to four p.m. at one nine nine three five Orleans in Detroit. And also Saturday, July seventh, twenty eighteen, Lake Point Community Church is hosting its annual free veterans barbecue and picnic from eleven to three p.m. That is located at one five five zero West Drawher, that's G-R-D-R-A-H-N-E-R Road in Oxford. So periodically, I will announce the veterans' events as I get them, and some things might be of interest to our audience, and some things, as always said, every veteran event, some things might not impact you, but you can pass it on. All of us have neighbors, friends, and family members who are veterans. Being no other veteran, I mean, being no other council comments, Mr. Mayor?
Just two very quick things. A reminder to everyone that this Friday at five o'clock is the deadline for two thousand eighteen Community Pride Award nominations. Right now, not a lot of nominations have been turned in. Usually, there's a last-minute rush, so hopefully by Friday. And those nominations go into the community relations office of the City of Southfield. And again, it's for individual homeowners, businesses large and small, condo complexes, large and small, and schools, and religious institutions. And secondly, this afternoon, the council president, city administrator, and I went to the, attended the meet and greet for the new superintendent of Southfield Public Schools. Jennifer Martin-Green is on the job. She started last week and is getting ready for the new school year. School starts on August twenty-seventh in Southfield, and I'm sure she'll be ready. I do have a follow-up meeting with her scheduled later this week. Thank you.
And also, as a follow-up, I met with Superintendent Green today also, and she will be visiting with us perhaps in our next two sessions. We're going to work out a date and time that works for her, but she offered to come visit with us, and she's eager to meet with us. And perhaps before the year's over, given the timing and the appropriateness of it, we will meet, the council will meet with the full school board for the City of Southfield. If the timing is not good for this particular fiscal calendar year, we will push it to two thousand nineteen. But they are eager to meet with us, and we have historically done this, and we will do it again. Administration?
Yes, very shortly, the discussion regarding complaints. We are about to roll out a new software package that will centralize the complaint tracking process. Multiple entities will be able to input. What we currently do not have is a system for producing final reports. And complaints come in from multiple departments, to Public Works, to the mayor's office, to my office, to the clerk's office, and any clerk will be able to input this information. What we'll be able to generate for the first time is a reporting of what's happened and what's the response. We'll be able to better quantify different complaints and the nature. So right now, staff, we are in the preliminary stages of training staff. I think it's interesting that we are moving forward, and Councilwoman Morris just brought up the complaint process and using technology to streamline it. People will be able to do things online, there'll be a tracking process. So we're looking forward to getting that forward, and we are probably some point prior to the first of September, we'll do the formal rollout.
One other item, we had a presentation last week by the Total Living Commission, and they indicated they have the picture prize, the Southfield Photo Prize. And please go online to vote for the picture of your choice. I've been asked to vote for several people's photos, but I can only vote for one. But if we get everybody voting, please utilize your right to vote and vote for the Southfield Photo Prize, go on the city website. And that is a nice project that we have. I know I dealt with it last year, and it was very festive, and the individuals there who are amateur photographers are really thrilled that their photos are being exhibited. The next item is the Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items this evening. The first item was discussed at the study session of this meeting, and that is requesting council to establish a one-hundred-and-eighty-day moratorium for sextile brothels within the city. Would allow the city planning department to research this proposed use, make some recommendations, take it through the planning commission, and get through council. At the current time, we need to take that opportunity to study that particular use.
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
I move that we make a one-hundred-and-eighty, we approve a one-hundred-and-eighty-day moratorium on the sextile brothel issue to give the planner occasion to study it.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the moratorium on the sextile brothel for one-hundred-and-eighty days to give our planner enough time to study the issue. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
The second item relates to a discussion that council had at its June fourth Committee of the Whole meeting. At that time, there was a discussion of an amendment to the overnight parking ordinance. These changes were recommended through the Code Enforcement Department, ultimately through the Neighborhood Services Committee and the Legislative Committee, in essence, two substantial changes to that ordinance. Currently, overnight parking is not permitted between the hours of three and six a.m. The recommendation by the Code Enforcement Department is to change that, to prohibit parking between the hours of two and five a.m. That change is supported by the police department, specifically the police chief. And the second amendment that is being requested is that currently, a resident would have the opportunity to contact the police department or the Code Enforcement Department and request a permit to park on the street because there's a social occasion, maybe there's a religious holiday, there's construction, something of that nature. But currently, that request is only allowed for twenty-four hours. So it doesn't really take into account, say, a holiday where maybe you have extra family members coming in for a three- or four-day period. So the change that's being proposed would take a, to allow a permit for up to seven days, and that would go through the police department or the Code Enforcement Department, they could issue that permit. But in order to keep the ordinance intact and have it have some meaning, which the police chief supports, a household would only be able to request two of those parking permits per year. And so those could be up to seven days each, but not more than two in a calendar year period. So those are the changes. They were favorably reviewed at the COW meeting and in front of you tonight, and also with a proposed resolution.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amended parking requirements.
Support. Move by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the amended parking requirements. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
We need an ordinance number.
Ordinance number?
Sixteen ninety-six.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move that ordinance number sixteen ninety-six be introduced.
Support. Been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum and supported by Mr. Frazier, that we introduce ordinance number sixteen ninety-six. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
We need an ordinance number.
Okay. That item will be enacted in thirty days. The next segmented, the clerk, Madam Clerk, you have any additional comments? Treasurer, planner, the assessor, the city engineer. We have nothing to schedule. We have no ordinances, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.